We'll call a council meeting to order. Everybody stand for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in our nation, with God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk, take the roll.
Mayor O'Connor?
Here.
Marsette?
Sarah.
Alms?
Here.
Dizio?
Here.
Weber?
Here.
Atkins Hoggatt?
Here.
Hall.
All right. First thing on the agenda, presentation. Hudson School District Superintendent to present a request to install an electronic message center at the high school. Superintendent, I don't see, I know I saw you earlier.
Come on here.
Okay.
So essentially, what the district's asking the council is, we've been given a donation for an electronic message center monument signed out in front of the high school by the Education Foundation. And we donate all the funds needed for this thing. So we would be requesting, we work with the city on some type of amendment of the ordinance to be able to put these in. We're kind of in an interesting situation in fact that we can only do schools on residential property and zoned residential. However, you know, typical signage is more reserved for commercial codes and challenges for us. And so I believe in your packet of information. You have a kind of a picture of what the sign would look like and which the sign would be available. One of the things about the sign would be used to obviously put information out about what we have going on with the district and also what's going on in the community. So there would be the opportunity to be able to use signage for public service announcements, PSAs, things along those lines. You know, take the situation where we're in right now, being able to get information out to the public could be utilized on the sign as well. So I guess with those things said, I guess I would entertain any questions people may have for me.
Anybody?
Yeah, Nick, my, I know that some of the neighbors are concerned about that who live right across there in High Point. Has the school district been able to reach out and hear concerns about some of the lighting issues, particularly at night that some of the residents may have there?
No, we haven't, we haven't done anything out of that yet because we haven't, you know, this is the first time we've brought it to council. You know, the lighting issues, we are able, the LED signage and the software package that would come with it would dim as it gets darker outside. And then also we can set it on timer so that, you know, at a certain time the sign would kick off and then not kick back on until a certain time in the morning. So we're trying to minimize that. And as far as High Point goes, the way the sign would be facing, it should be facing east-west. So it wouldn't be facing High Point, it'd be facing school district property on both sides.
What time would you shut it off, Nick?
Well, I guess, you know, that could be something that we could talk about. I mean, anytime between probably 10:00 and 11:00, we could shut that, shut the sign down and then turn it back on at 6:00 in the morning as we have kids to be in our buildings and different things going on.
Nick, Jim Weber, would there be any flashing messages or just a?
Well, I mean, they could change through messages, I guess. I don't know. I mean, would there be a lot of animation or things like that? No, I mean, I wouldn't anticipate that that would be the case. I mean, our big issue is just to try to get the messages out there, you know, and things along those, along those lines. So our goal would be to try to limit that as much as possible.
So Nick, are you looking for pretty much a variance of the code tonight? Or are you just trying to present and get us thinking about it?
Well, I mean, this is the route when I talked with Mike and Aaron about it and the mayor, I guess. Looking, looking for some, some direction, where do I, where do I go with this thing from here? And what direction you'd like to see me go with it?
Well, one of the thoughts I have is I wonder if we could put this through a public hearing where some of the neighbors would be able to give us their concerns and talk through this a little bit more before making a decision on it.
Well, we, we don't have any item on the agenda for action and I don't think we had any intention for action here for a little bit, but I think.
Catherine, yeah, I do.
So our, if I might, counsel, our process would be to refer to plan commission. And then we'd be looking not so much as a variance per se, because that'd be a board of appeals item, but more so an amendment to the existing code to provide some sort of accommodation for this type of signage at a school property or public property in general. So that's what we would do. And then obviously any type of zoning code amendment will require a public hearing.
Okay. Yeah, I just wasn't sure from the agenda what, what was being asked tonight, so thanks for clarifying that.
Can I just ask a question? It seems to me like at a lot of these places that have these signs, that's usually like at the main entrance. And this is not at the main entrance. Is there, do you have any information on the rationale of that?
This, this would be at the main entrance.
Oh, it is? Okay.
Yep, it's right next to where that retention pond is in the front, the main entrance to the building, the property.
Okay.
And we have it set back from the road so it doesn't, it wouldn't obscure, you know, traffic line of sight or anything like that. So, you know, to have it a little bit further back.
Anybody else?
Director, we'll have, this is Bill Alms. So I'm wondering, did you mention, would you be amenable to putting up community messages as well as school messages, especially like during the summer?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I think that, I think that makes a lot of sense. You know, we tend to have a lot fewer school activities and things like that going on in the summer. But, you know, it could be everything from, you know, working, I think what we'd want to set up is it would be messages maybe we'd work with the city on, not necessarily every, every group that would want to put type of messaging on the board. And so, you know, if the city wanted to advertise a Thursday night concert in the park or, you know, the Santa coming to downtown or like right now, anything that's related to COVID-19 updates and things like that. Absolutely, those would be all things that we could, could put on the sign to make sure that we're connecting with as many people as possible. You know, even though we are in a residential area, Vine Street is probably one of the arterials through the, through the city. And so there's a lot of people that drive by that, drive by that area every day.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody? Nick, anything more?
No, just look for the, look forward to the opportunity. So, I mean, I guess my next steps would be what to work, work with Mike Johnson and Reeves to work through planning commissions. Is that what I'm standing here and you guys say?
Yep.
Okay.
All right, that's all I had. I appreciate you guys taking the time. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Nick. All right, citizen comments. Any opportunity for anybody to talk about anything that they would like that's not on the current agenda? And just please keep it short and sweet and please do not repeat. Are there any comments? Any comments? Mary Claire? You're muted, Mary Claire.
Jim can go first if he wants.
Jimmy, you're muted.
I like it.
I think I, I think I'm unmuted now.
Okay.
Jim Ludiger, I live at 624 Hickory and Hudson here, and I'm the board chair at High Point. And I know that we've got some residents that are very concerned about this signage. You know, it came as a surprise, which I think was probably a little inappropriate, but I know that there are going to be residents that are going to be unhappy, to tell you the truth. That's all my comment.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Mary Claire, did you want to go now or do you want me to ask anybody else to name the comments?
Well, I just felt bad because we raised our hands at the same time, so. Yeah. All right, thank you so much. Mary Claire Potter from President of the Hudson Chamber at 502 Second Street. Oh, sorry. Oh, that's what I was saying. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Oh, Roger that, okay. Thanks to the webcam from Bill Alms. Okay, so the last six weeks, as we know, is a time that we've never experienced in the past. And COVID-19 has impacted the entire community and the businesses here in town. And for some, it means they had to close their doors and lay off their employees. For others, they're busy working because they're a part of the supply chain and producing important products. Some industries are business as usual when I talk to them and others are pivoting their marketing, their processes, just to try and stay in business. Seven more restaurants are opening curbside this week. I encourage all who can to support takeout, delivery and purchasing gift cards to give them some cash now. A full list of these restaurants is available on the Chamber website homepage. And then retailers are now able to offer a curbside service, which is also an opportunity for us to support them with purchases and gift cards too. In the Chamber too, we have had to pivot how we work and what our priorities are and how we can best support the business community now and as we look to recovery. This week, we have two legislative updates that I want to be sure you're aware of and invite you to join us tomorrow morning. We have a Zoom call with Representative Shannon Zimmerman, and that's tomorrow morning at 8:00 a.m. And then on Thursday, we have another Zoom call with Senator Patty Shachner, and that's Thursday, May 7th at 9:00 a.m. A great opportunity to hear from our elected officials and all their work on what they're trying to do to help Wisconsin and Hudson. And then also I invite you to Good Morning Hudson on May 13th at 11:30, Zoom meeting as we welcome back Chris Wright. He is the CEO of Minnesota United to talk about our why and how it has changed perhaps in the last six weeks. Tonight, you will hear about signage for the We Heart Hudson, Wisconsin campaign. Christensen Creative developed and is executing this campaign pro bono with a goal to promote community pride, generate awareness to shop local and evolve the messaging to support a longer range goal of supporting tourism following your heart to Hudson. 2020 is the year of the car and more regional travel, and Hudson is a perfect destination for that. As now we are promoting Stay Smart, Stay Apart, we will begin to promote Hudson as a destination when appropriate. We know that things, as we navigate these uncharted waters, change every day. What does not change is the commitment of the Hudson Chamber to be there to support businesses, employees and the Hudson community. And I thank you, the city and your team for your ongoing partnership as we work together.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any other comments? Any other comments? Close that portion of the agenda, consent agenda.
Approve the meeting minutes from the March 23rd, 2020, the April 13th, 2020, regular council meetings and approve the April 21st, 2020 organizational meeting minutes. Approve the claims in the amount of $697,796.40. First quarter building inspectors report. Approval of conditional use permit, application for a temporary garden center at 2351 Cooley Road, Garden City LLC. Approval of setting public hearing date of June 1st, 2020 for a zoning map amendment from our one family residential to our two, two-family residential for part of 497 Stageline Road, Brian Martel. Approval of setting a public hearing date of June 1st, 2020 for amendments to the municipal code to include Chapter 141, short-term home rentals and repeal Section 255-70 bed and breakfast establishments. Approve firework permit applications. Place on file the March 10th, 2020 Public Utilities Commission meeting minutes. Approve the pool banners and vinyl sidewalk graphics requested by the Hudson Chamber of Commerce. Appoint Pam Broca of Hudson, North Hudson Community Access Board. Approve resigning the dive team operations from Hudson Police Department to the Hudson Fire Department. And approve the regular operator license application as listed on the issue sheet.
Move to approve.
Second. Got a motion, second to approve. Roll call.
Marsette?
Yes.
Alms?
Yes.
Dizio?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Atkins Hoggatt?
Yes.
And Hall?
Yes.
Motion's approved, consent agenda is approved. Just trying to get back to my agenda here, folks. I got a ways to go, but I think it's the Parking Utilities Commission, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Becky, could you read that off for me or Aaron, whatever it says there?
Yep, that's no problem. So it's basically just the ordinance adopting downtown parking utility commissions. So I don't know if Jeff's on or Randy, if someone would like to talk about, Public Safety Committee discussed it. They have a recommendation to the council on it. And then attached is the, is the proposed ordinance that was initially discussed, but it does not have any changes to it or anything like that that Public Safety may be requesting.
Yeah, at Public Safety meeting, we discussed it in length, had some questions. And we actually just recommended to move it on for discussion and go from there.
Okay.
Okay. Well, I think, you know, I'll start out, the, the recommendation was to, to create the commission that was with a consistent construction, consistent with the Public Utilities Commission, pretty much mirrored the Public Utilities Commission makeup. And that's kind of where we started. So whatever wants to chime in on the discussion that happened at Public Safety, feel free.
Well, let me make a clarification there, Rich, is that we separated a couple of the issues. The main issue was who's going to sit on that commission? And then the other issue would be the issue of Sarah involved, which is a separate from the main issue of who sits on that. This is what came out of Public Safety.
So I was the one that recommended that we sent that to Public, or that we send it to committee, actually. I don't, I think I picked Public Safety. I can't remember if I mentioned them by name or not. But the rationale there was that we have many different types of businesses downtown and listed in the first proposal was just a retail and a restaurant. And I thought it might be worthy of the conversation at committee level to include more types of businesses. And as an example, you know, we've got a lot of services downtown. We have massage, yoga, haircuts, other salons. We've got professionals, insurance, financial consultants, dentists, attorneys. These are, these other types of businesses are also, you know, interested in having a successful parking program. So that was my suggestion at our last council meeting when we suggested that. And then, you know, I followed up by suggesting that to the Public Safety Committee members as well. And so that was what came out of that was agreement to recommend or at least discuss, as Randy said, that I thought it was to recommend, but that it could be comprised of a different makeup of people. So one from retail, one from restaurant, one from service, one from professional. And then the person from city council and then the representative from the chamber as it was initially, initially proposed. And then the, instead of three from the city at large, it would then be one from the city at large. And my rationale for that is, you know, either if you're needing to use the parking system, you're going to one of those four kinds of businesses or you're going to the library or you're going to the park or the PIPs. You know, it's, there's, I mean, that's kind of, that's kind of the makeup of who is going to need to use the parking system. And it just seemed to me that having all sorts of, all types of businesses represented on that committee would, you know, they're looking out for the best interest of their users and their patrons. And then the person from city council and, you know, the other, the other three on the committee would obviously be looking into, you know, all the other users, the park and the library and such. So that's, that was my thinking process of why I would like, I wanted it to have a little bit more vetting before it came back to council.
I agree with Sarah that we do need to have representatives from all of the different types of businesses so that they all have a voice in what's going on.
You know, quite frankly, over the years, folks, as Mary Claire is still on, a lot of the issues that came up were from the businesses. Why aren't we going to be listening to the citizens that are using the parking? Why don't we appoint citizens from all around the city?
And then can I ask just a, just a question too? Are we, do we have a concern when we get that specific about actually finding people to fill the spots? I don't know exactly how many professional and how many individual ones, but when you start getting too, and this is just in general with any committee or commission, when you start getting too specific, it can be difficult to find people that meet the niche to fill it in. But I do appreciate Sarah, what you're saying and Joyce as well about, you know, maybe, maybe restaurant and retail wasn't the, maybe that wasn't the best straight definition. Maybe it should just be two downtown business representatives or whatever number you want. I guess my only concern would be is if you start getting too specific with it, will we struggle to fill that spot? Or will we start running into, well, you're not professional, you're more retail or, you know what I mean? Maybe we got, maybe we're getting too specific and we should look at maybe just a broader definition of downtown business and assign a certain number to that.
My concern overall is, is taking away the citizens at large. Right now, we have it listed as, as four, call it businesses, those types of stakeholders. And then that dwindles the, the representation of the people who use the park, people that park there. So that's, I would not be in favor of dropping or naming the three, or taking away three representatives from the city at large.
I have a, my different point of view is that the downtown representatives are the ones who live and die on the parking system, not the citizens. And it's, it needs to be useful to them, but it's the downtown businesses that really pay the price.
And I think if you have that representation, that they're also, I mean, they're the ones that really need that system to be successful. So they have more of a, you know, a drive and a reason to make sure that we can find the best solution possible. The citizens, yes, they use it. But I think it's important, I mean, you know, I hear a lot of, well, it should just be all free and then that will solve everything. Well, there's, there's some reasons that, that, you know, that the people might not understand why, you know, free is not the best solution. It doesn't, it doesn't drive our objectives as far as having turnover and such. I think the businesses understand, you know, their unique needs that some of the citizens aren't thinking about two in the morning when the bars shut down and people have to get safely from their business to their car. And I think some of these issues are best addressed by, you know, the business owners who know their customers and, and can look for, out for those interests plus the employees.
Aaron, did you, okay, did you like the original ordinance presented the first time I was worded?
Well, and again, I mean, this is.
I'm asking for.
Yep, I'm looking at it more as just in general policy. I worry too much when you get too specific because I have seen that issue before where you, you can struggle to get people to serve on commissions already. And when you make, when you dwindle it down to five choices, especially in a small area like this, I do have some concern that we may have unfilled seats or really we have no competition for the seats because out of the five businesses, one person really is interested. And so that was, that was my concern with it. But I recognize that, like I said, maybe retail and restaurant wasn't, is too specific as well. And we should maybe just say downtown business. Downtown business owners, downtown business representatives, whatever wording you want to use, probably representatives because it doesn't necessarily be an owner. But then pick what number's right. I, I agree that with Bill that I like to see that input from other citizens because Jim, you're right that these downtown business owners do, or businesses, whoever they are representing, they live and die by the parking and that's a big part of what they're, you know, what they have to deal with. But our citizens also, I mean, it, it affects them as well. I mean, it also affects them as they say, people, you know, we're inviting friends to town, downtown parking is an issue, what's the concern? So I see both ways, which is why I think it's good to have a balance, if you can, of both. Not heavily weighted all on downtown businesses and not heavily weighted all on just citizens in general. But get that balance on there so you do get a diversity of comments, hopefully, and diversity of views on that commission, which is I think what the original one did, but maybe was too specific with, you know, restaurant, retail. Maybe changing that to, to representatives of downtown businesses or whatever the number you decide on, but keep it more general.
Mary Claire, you got anything to say there?
Who?
Mary Claire?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you say that. You know, I think, I agree that it would be nice to have a little bit more diversity and not just be, you know, one retail, one restaurant and so forth. So I think the diversity of business because it does impact each of them. I think, I like the proposal that Sarah had. I think it makes sense. I think you're still getting your citizen input through that because they are business owners and citizens and can have a great voice for their, their patrons and those that use the system. And I don't think in all honesty, it's going to be hard to fill those spots. I think there's enough interest and enough engagement that we've seen the past several months on the whole issue that I think that we would be able to fill those spots.
Randy?
So do you want this to go back to Public Safety or do you want to work this out tonight? Or do you want to move for first reading?
Flare, you're talking to.
I think, well.
Rich or Catherine?
I think we should try to hammer this out tonight, but if there's a move to send it back to committee, that's fine, but.
No, we don't need to if we can do it tonight. If we can clearly state who's going to sit on that, on that board. Because right now it's, it's a mess between what was suggested from Public Safety and what we have from the original ordinance.
You know, if.
Overlapping.
Here's, here's my thoughts on this. First of all, we are where we're at, I think, with parking because we had a system that was put in place. We thought it was a good system. It was a system that had been worked on for about two years from the ad hoc parking committee. And, and then all of a sudden, when it was really truly implemented, it fell apart because everybody was concerned about all of the complaints that we were getting from where? From the citizens at large, right? And then all of a sudden, we wanted to start to make changes to our parking that we had worked on for two years because somehow there was a feeling that there was ill will out there from the people that were using the parking system and they weren't happy. And we started to react and respond to ill will. Ill will was the buzzword or buzz phrase at the time. And I think that the, the structure that we have with this commission, first of all, number one, is consistent with other commissions that we have. But number two, it addresses the issue of the ill will. You know, if you want to listen, isn't that what we're supposed to do is listen to the citizens of our community? And we kind of did because we were reacting and responding to some of the issues that they had that was creating this ill will out there. And now you want to take away their voice? That doesn't make sense to me at all. We want to listen to the people out there and, and we have already reacted to the ill, to the response, to the ill will that was being created by the citizens. And now you have an opportunity to give them a voice in what they, you know, what the parking system is going to look like downtown. And, and I thought it looked pretty good. Now you want to take it away. So that's number one. Number two is that, you know, I've taken a little bit of heat over the last couple of months because I've been saying that parking has been driven, these decisions have been driven by the Chamber. because I've been saying that parking has been driven, these decisions have been driven by the chamber and by the business community. And people didn't like hearing that. A lot of people agreed with that, they understood that. But I got a lot of pushback from people that said, wait a minute, wait a minute, you know, that's not true and that it shouldn't be the case. But now we've got a construction for a commission that is clearly weighted to the business community. And I'm hearing some of the same people that were arguing with me or disagreeing with me, saying that it should be decided by the business community. So let me just say this. I don't care. I think citizens should probably have more input than what you're going to allow them with the changes that you want to make. But I absolutely believe that these decisions on parking should be made by the business community. And you know that that's been a position that I've taken for a while, that plus I'd like to see free parking, period. But, but if we're, if short of free parking, then I think these decisions should be made by the business community with input from the citizens. But I just want to hear you say it. I just want to hear you because you've been arguing with me saying that that's not true. I just want to hear you say it, that that's the way it should be.
I think my problem with the first proposal was that it lacked the breadth of representing downtown. And this, so the second proposal that just came through does address that. If, it would be simple to add two, two more citizens to this team. And just, then, then you've got your broader representation. So that, that, would that address all the issues that?
I think that's a good idea. I don't think we need to be limited by, to seven.
Out of curiosity, what is the makeup and what is the size of the water utility?
I believe it's seven and it's. Let's see, the water utility, so. We've got one representative from North Hudson, one representative from the city council, and then the rest are from the city. So that would be four other, five other representatives from the city.
Yep. The only specific ones are North Hudson and the council member. The rest are just at large, citizens at large, yeah.
Well, this committee should be no different than any other utility commission or any other commission we have. It should be, remain consistent throughout the city.
I don't see that that's necessary. It should be built around the need. This one has a, is a very, and we've created a very specific need that needs to be addressed. So I, I see the advantages of both.
Well, this is a very different need from the Public Utilities Commission for the Water and Sewer. And sorry, I don't have my video on, but soon as I turn on my video, everything slows down and gets staticky. So I've turned off my video for that.
So my, my, I'm listening a lot because I don't honestly have strong feelings on how the committee, who's the committee made up of. What I would say is, there's a lot of different ways to cut this pie up. What I'm hearing is we want downtown business folks and we want public at large. So my thought would be, you know, could we do just like three of the downtown businesses, however that's defined? I agree with Erin that I don't think we want to get too narrow. Could we do three public at large, three businesses? The Public Works Chair and then maybe, and maybe add, maybe add one more person from the board from the Chamber of Commerce, so you'd have like eight or something like that. But I'm just, all I'm trying to do is trying to figure out like a balance between what we're looking for.
Needs to be an odd number.
Okay.
But I would agree with you, I don't have a problem with that.
So maybe three, three, and then the public, and then the city council person? And, and then my other question would be, should the city council person be the Public Works Chair? Or should the city council person be the District Five rep?
That's a separate issue from this one.
But it's, it's public safety, not public works.
Correct.
But what, would it make more sense to be the District Five person? I'm just saying, instead of the public safety, or is it better to have public safety?
I'd like to have that conversation as well, but I think let's, since we want to make this be a productive meeting where we can come to some decisions, let's nail down the membership first. And then, and then talk about that, if that would be all right.
Okay. Sarah, would you, would you be open to like a three and three? Is that, would that be okay?
Three and three and then the one from city council?
Yeah, because the city council, what I'm thinking is the city council person, the elected one. So then they'd be the, it'd be the extra vote anyway, so there's a public accountability there.
So if we said three businesses from downtown, the chamber person, the.
You'd be losing the chamber person. You'd be losing the chamber rep. You'd have three downtown business representatives, three citizens at large, and then the chair of the public safety committee. Or somebody else if you decide to make a different decision, a council member.
You could do two businesses and one person that represents the chamber and that person certainly could be a business person as well, right?
Yeah.
The other thing that we haven't mentioned is whether or not all of the members need to live in the city. If they're representing the businesses downtown, do they need to be, to also live in the city?
Yes, I think so.
And I agree.
Joyce, your question is that you mean business, the business owner representation? The business owner needs to be a citizen, excuse me, citizen of the city?
Right, that, that was my question, yes.
Got it. I, I don't think I agree with that.
Yeah, I'm kind of iffy on that as well.
All right. That may limit some of the people that would be allowed to, to represent the business community.
Okay, so let's hammer that one out first since that's a new one that, the assumption was that they were. But let's, I mean, because basically all of our committee commissions or anything like that, you're a citizen unless it specifically says otherwise, that you're representing someplace outside the city or that you don't have to be. So in this case, the assumption of the ordinance is that you are a citizen, a representative of the downtown business, but you're still a citizen of Hudson. So let's get that clarified. Do we want to require them to be citizens or not? And like I said, I think pretty much all of our other committee commissions, they are unless it's very specific in the, the ordinance that says that they're not for some reason, whether they're representing an outside area, you know, like North Hudson representative and Public Utility Commission, things like that. But for the most part, everything else, it is a citizen only. But we've also talked about this, we're also getting kind of specific with who we're appointing here. Generally, it's just five citizens at large. Here, we're starting to identify some specific, especially downtown, you know, business representatives. So let's clarify that first. Should they be citizens or not as far as a downtown business reps?
Mary Claire, do you have any idea, a percentage perhaps, of the downtown business owners that live in the city?
I apologize, I don't of the top.
I wouldn't expect, but I just, ballpark maybe?
Yeah, I mean, there's several that I know that live, you know, in the city and have their business there. But I apologize, I don't know that percentage.
Ballpark?
Uh, tough one, sorry.
Fifty percent?
Uh, maybe forty to fifty.
Okay.
But.
Okay.
Well, we should qualify business owners that are downtown then. If it makes sense, because they own a business, they have a vested interest.
They pay taxes, right? The business pays taxes in the city.
Uh.
So what you're saying?
What's that?
Building owner does.
So what you're saying is?
And they own the, and they own the building, then they pay taxes.
Mm-hmm.
Right. So Bill is, and Randy, what she's saying then is, is that for the downtown business representatives, they either have to be the building owner or, or has to be a citizen. Is that kind of what you're saying? If it's a building owner, you're fine if they don't live in town. But if they're not the building owner, if they're just a manager or something, they have to be a citizen?
Shouldn't be a manager, should be the owner involved.
Right.
Well, the, the owner of the business could be different from the owner of the property.
Right.
Yeah.
I, I don't.
Either way, the property owner and/or the owner of the business who's paying the taxes can do it.
I, I don't know, I don't know how many of the property owners I know downtown, but you certainly have property owners with multiple businesses. I, I don't know that property owners are going to be as in tune to the parking issue that the actual business owner would be.
I agree.
So I'm okay with just going with business owner. And frankly, unless there's a, a reason why we shouldn't, I'm okay with saying that just, just leaving it at his business owner and regardless of whether they are a resident of the city proper or not.
Okay.
Kathy, any problem with that?
No, I don't think so.
Erin?
No, I think that's fine. Just want to make sure we're on the same page.
One more change I'd like to see if that's, if we're ready to go is to take out the public safety chairman as that designee and to make it a council representative who represents the downtown district. Whether that's five or whether we have a census change, it could be three.
Yeah, we are going to be doing.
Representing, just one.
Okay, so we are going to be doing redistricting, so that's true. Let's not, I would not identify it by the specific number. I would just say the council representative that represents the down, represents the downtown parking utility commission zone.
Yeah. Anybody, any issues with that?
The only thought I have, I like it, but the only thought I have is what if the, what if the redistricting gets split halfway downtown or something like that? So you have two people with downtown interests.
We, we missed you there. What if what?
What if the redistricting draws a line where downtown has two different districts?
Then I, I would say then we revisit the issue when that happens.
We'd have to readdress it then, yeah, for sure.
Let's flip a coin like we do for president every other year.
Okay, so progress. All right, so we got the business owner part, we got the council rep who, the council representative whose district includes a downtown parking utility commission zone. But let's go back to the, then the numbers. Are we good then with three downtown business owners, three representatives at large, and then the council member?
I would be.
Do we want somebody from the Chamber of Commerce though?
Like I said, it could be two with the third business person coming from the chamber. Mary Claire, thoughts?
I, I think in the original proposal, it said a chamber board member. So I just, just for clarity on that, is that what you're still looking for? A chamber board member, not a chamber staff person? But board member was the one that was included in the first proposal.
If we're going to go with chamber member, I would leave that to, right now, I, I would look for direction from you on how you would want to do that.
Well, I think the chamber, you know, represents the business community. It would be nice to have a chamber rep on there, but, because, but I don't want to, you know.
You want it to be a board member?
Stay within the number of seven. I don't necessarily agree that you have to stay with seven because that's what you do with everything else. I think it's unique, it's a new system, we don't know how it's all rolling out. But I appreciate that you all want to stay within that seven to be consistent with everything else.
So would you like us to, to say two business people? And I think the original was one from the chamber, one not from the chamber, and then a chamber board member. Do you still want it to be a chamber board member? Does that matter to you?
Uh, I'll end up going to all the meetings anyway because it's a vested interest and it's important to this community. So I guess it's however the group decides. I wasn't, I didn't really understand the difference of why, if they had to be a chamber member or non-chamber member. I wasn't clear on what the, the thought process was behind that.
Well, I, I originally said that because I thought that there are people down there that are not members of the chamber that need representation and they're, they need to get it from someplace other than an organization that they don't belong to. That was my thinking, okay, so. Paul?
Could it, could it just be worded like there's three downtown business representatives and some must be from the chamber and some must not, must not be from the chamber or something like that? So you just have a flexibility and it could be a board member, it could be another person? Just so you get a mix of chamber and non-chamber?
I'm good with that.
Yeah.
I mean, Sarah, I would ask Sarah your opinion. You've heard a lot from the business community on how they feel about this.
I guess if, if we're gonna, so basically what we're backed down to right now, it appears to me like we're back down to the original proposed and what got discussed in public safety of adding more types of businesses being represented. To increase that to four isn't no longer, you know, kind of what we're talking about. So that being said, I don't feel it necessary to include anything about that. I, I would, I would prefer we just strike it all together and let it, let it be how it is. As Erin said, it's hard enough to maybe populate a committee. And if, you know, if it's a downtown business, who wants to sit on this committee? There's a passion for it. And I don't know if it's right that we dictate the mix of chamber members, non-chamber members. And I say that too because, you know, there was a time in my business where being a chamber member might have been beneficial to me. And then, you know, now I'm nationwide and maybe it's not so much right now a thing to me. But maybe it will be in the past or in the future. So I think other businesses face those same, you know, it's annual membership for a reason. And I just don't, I don't want to get a good committee member on and then they say, oh, well, we want to participate in showcase this year. And I'm not a member of the chamber, so I want to become a member of the chamber, but I'm on this parking committee and I can't become a member of the chamber, I'll get thrown off. I think it's, I don't, I don't like, I don't like having it in there at all, actually. I just think we say three downtown business owners.
Well, and, and represent, recognize with that too, that, you know, the mayor will make the recommendations for the appointments and the American asks that question. And if he, if the mayor, whoever it is at, you know, anytime, you know, now and in the future, you know, the, the American, you know, if, if the mayor's recommendations, he may, or she, depending on what's happening future, may decide that they would, they don't have a problem with it. Or maybe they'll say, well, because you aren't with the chamber, I think you should maybe be on this time. So there is that flexibility then if it's not in there, that it still can happen, that that's part of the process of reviewing who applies and who gets recommended.
What about specifying that at least one downtown representative be a chamber member? That way, it's, it's flexible, but there is at least somebody who is in the, who is a chamber member.
Yeah, that's fine too. At least one has to be a chamber member.
Well, I think, I think the original wording said one chamber member, one non-chamber member, and then was it a board member from the chamber? So we had two chamber members on there and that's, that's the way I really kind of wanted it at first. That's when we were crafting this. I, I guess I think it's important to have a non-chamber business person there. I understand what you're saying, Sarah, but you know, there are other people down there that have made a conscious decision not to join the chamber. And they're not represented by anybody. And they don't have, I think that they should have the ability to have some say in, in this as a business owner, parking's going to affect them as well. And so I.
Well, I think that was a proposal from somebody was that not, I think Paul actually, is just say not all.
Yeah.
Not all downtown business owners.
Yeah.
Shall be chamber members.
I like that, that's fine.
That just takes care of it. You may have two that aren't, or you may have two that are.
Right.
But you'll, you'll have for sure at least one chamber member on there, that's for sure.
All right.
Clear the mud?
I'm, I'm good with that. I, I will, would accept that as a friendly amendment. I would accept Randy's suggestion as a friendly amendment.
I've moved, we approve this as the, as we discussed. I hope, Becky, you have it?
I got it.
All right, Erin, okay.
I mean, it's basically, just to clarify then, so the council representative will be whichever council member's district encompasses the downtown parking utility commission area. And that the membership of the commission shall be three downtown business owners, not all of whom can be chamber members, and then it will be three citizens at large.
So we are not doing like a board member of the chamber?
Not necessarily, no.
I would sec, Randy, did you move, Randy? I would second that.
All right, we got a motion, a second, further discussion. What was that, Randy?
Paul asked me to move.
Oh. Oh. Bust a move, Randy.
It's getting too thick, you know, about this parking.
Yeah.
People beating down the doors to join this committee.
Well, they were beating down the doors after they saw what it looked like the first time around.
That's all right.
Now, all right, so any other discussion?
Oh, are, are you going to bring it back or are you going to adopt it as described? In which case you need to suspend the rules.
Move those, suspend the rules.
Second, motion, a second to suspend the rules, roll call.
Marsette?
Yes.
Alms?
Yes.
Zizio?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Atkins Hoggit?
Yes.
Lynn Hall?
Yes.
Rules are suspended.
Now I move.
Now, wait a second.
Thanks for keeping us on track, Kathy.
You're welcome.
All right, again, any further discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
All right.
Posed, motions approved. You got me, caught me. I gotta get back to the agenda again. Becky, you want to read off the next item, please?
Discussion and possible action on city's involvement in the state highway 35 Second Street project and the state municipal agreements for the project and approval and approved resolution, 10 dash 20, the reimbursement resolution.
Dean?
All right, looks like somebody turned off my video, but it's probably for the better.
So
What?
Who you got over there?
Oh, nobody. It's just, you don't want to see me, do you? Oh, there I am. Okay. All right, so as we've discussed the past few council meetings, um, been discussing the future 2021 highway 35 Second Street project. As we just, it kind of, it goes through components of Front Street to Cooley Road, concrete pavement panel replacement and city also replacing Santris remains. The Cooley Road intersection replacement of signal system and some improvements for safety. Cooley Road to Vine Street, mill and overlay of the existing pavement replacement pedestrian ramps, replacing lighting and constructing bump outs, a couple intersections, and then Vine Street to Lake Malaloo Bridge, complete reconstruction of roadway and utilities involved there. We also, I should say, Dave Capick, still with us here on the line from Wistat. And he can certainly chime in as needed here with any questions or concerns. So so I wanted to alert everybody that he's, he's here too. So we've discussed design of this project at multiple council meetings. We've, staff and council members have had concerns regarding the design of the roadway, especially between River Street and Lake Malaloo. And especially in regards of bicycle and pedestrian traffic. Excuse me, the design of pedestrian ramps in the project corridor and utilization of existing Lake Malaloo Bridge for protected bike movements, among other things. Following our last discussion on the April 13 city council meeting, we met with representatives from Wistat and the design team to discuss the next steps on the project. I included some of the kind of bigger things that we discussed and the bullet points and I'll just quickly summarize, go through that list if my computer would not be frozen. Of course it is, right, when I need it to not be. Let me just try signing out here on real quick. First thing was, can the project timeline be tweaked to allow some more time to figure out some of the design challenges, especially between the river and River Street and Lake Malaloo Bridge segment? Sorry, I'm just getting back to my thing here. So Wistat's response was in order to meet the intended bidding schedule, project can't be delayed to buy more time to discuss project changes. Wistat intends to have plans finalized by August 1st, which means that we need to submit 90% plans essentially now. Delaying the acceptance of plans would likely require construction to move to 2022. May not even be possible because of, you know, without the funding for doing it in 2021 and not sure if that could get pushed back. Because there's other projects in the state we need to get constructed to. So we're not the only show in town, obviously. As far as Wistat goes. The Division Street to North Street design, we submitted a revised layout. What we felt meeting the minimum design standards in the Wistat, what they call facility design manual, essentially their manual for designing these projects. We tried to address some of the concerns we've previously heard from Wistat. I attached that design attachment A, if you guys got to look at it, along with some of the kind of how that fits with construction staging and if there's a car broken down under the railroad bridge and all that good stuff. Wistat conferred with other staff and they are not looking to move forward with our design. They forwarded a revised design of their own, which is in attachment B. All right, thanks to whoever's doing that. Not me.
I got it.
Wistat made the comment to suggest working with the railroad to provide a crossing of the railroad tracks nearby instead of what we were proposing to do with the Sheridan's path. The Lake Malaloo Bridge crossing, we asked the question, if the city is able to get the path constructed up to the bridge, will Wistat allow the facility to cross the bridge at a later date? Because of the how the bridge is designed, they don't want to allow the buffer back facility across the bridge until a few things. First, the city gets by in from North Hudson. So obviously you wanted to, the path that connect to something on the other end. And also the roadway crown not falling on the centerline, the travel lanes. Wistat made the suggestion that we hadn't discussed before, that the city could wait until the bridge needs redecking in approximately 10 years to kind of incorporate those changes across at that point in time. Might be a better time to do it. That we can get the design right across the bridge. Pedestrian ramp designs particularly through downtown, we feel are less than ideal. Provide a sketch of a depressed corner type design. We comment, commonly seen in Minnesota for similar situations. Provides more space for sight impaired and mobility impaired pedestrians to maneuver versus what the state was showing. I attached a sketch that I made in attachment C. Sorry, you might not be able to read all the text there, but it kind of gives you the idea of what that looks like. We also offered to design the ramps if it would save time and expense. Wistat was going to check in on, see if the type of ramps that we were proposing would be allowed and I never got a response to that point. Sorry, my computer froze again, of course.
While you're working on a computer freeze,
Yeah.
Wistat's on, can you comment, Dave, on that part that Dean hasn't gotten a response about yet?
Yeah, can everyone hear me okay?
Yep.
Yep. Okay, I'm in the same boat. Yeah, I had video earlier and it went away, so apologize for that. Yeah, we did have some talking about the depressed curb detail and we do not accept that as a standard. We would not be allowed to put it in as part of our project. There we go. We used to have a very similar detail in Wisconsin, but it was removed about, oh, within five to 10 years ago from our standards. The person who did the, who was responsible for it has left DOT, so we can't really figure out why. But it's presumed it was removed for a reason. So we have our type ones that we have planned to be in and used at the intersections where these are proposed that do meet ADA standards and have passed our tests for design.
All right.
Thanks, Dave.
Yeah, thank you, Dave. I'm just really having issues with this tonight, sorry. I think the next thing was the two-way left turn lane south of Cooley. Is that correct, Aaron? Or somebody?
Yeah, let me get to it here. Uh, get the right part. Hold on here. Side street tie-ins?
Oh, okay. Yeah, thanks. We discussed the side street tie-ins, the design of the tie-ins. So side street tie-ins being how far back on each of the side streets, the project would go to kind of match what's existing out there. We felt that the amount that the project went back wasn't enough to facilitate making a good accessible sidewalk crossings. Wistat didn't necessarily agree with that. So we discussed that. Yep, thank you, Aaron. Next, uh, next thing is the two-way left turn lane. We discussed that a little bit more as well. Wistat stated that we need to complete a traffic study for acceptance at a later date. And we feel that, you know, that that's reasonable. It's kind of a, you know, we got to make sure that, you know, if we change something around there, that's going to work. So we feel that is a legitimate concern. So we can consider that at a later date. It's, to switch that around would just be a matter of striping for the most part, so, which is not expensive. We also provided a number of smaller design things in an email, which is attached to attachment D. I'm not going to go through all those. That'd take a while. Haven't really seen a response to most of that as well. Additionally, the, we received
Can we ask, sorry, can we ask Dave quick? Do we expect a response at some point on those?
Yeah, I just made a note here. I know we had started looking at those and I've seen the responses, at least around in draft. I thought you would have had something from either Mohammed or Jeff Abramson with theirs. Because I know they're, the response has developed. So I'll follow up with Mohammed and, and it's, it might be sitting in someone's email right now.
Okay.
Waiting to send and whatever as a draft. So I'll follow up and check with those, those gentlemen in the morning.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I had not received anything on it, so thank you, Dave.
Dean, are there, are there any on that list of 19, 19 or so items that are really critical? That 20, 20 items, I guess 21, that are, have high safety impact?
Well, uh, the handling of North Hudson traffic on Third Street, I think, would have a safety impact. We want to make sure that additional traffic is not going to cause problems for the people who live on Third Street, nor anybody who's, you know, trying to cross Third Street. Now there's a lot more traffic and all that kind of stuff. I, I had made a comment in there about adding pedestrian ramps where there aren't existing ones. And I I'll kind of wait to see what the response is on that one. I'm just paging through it right now, sorry.
I think the general answer is, is that none of them are the major ones that we were had overly wanted to see changes for, but they're ones that we want to see, try to see addressed. And if we can get the changes, that would be positive. That would be good.
Yep. Yep. Um, I'm, I'm just not seeing a ton of stuff in the attachment D that would be, in my mind anyway, major issues, which is why we kind of talked through the major ones with Wistat and had the minor ones go to a, to email handling that. All right, so if I may move on here to we received the state municipal agreements for the project from Wistat. Those were sent out by Becky at a separate date because we received them after the packet was put together. We, city staff and attorney have reviewed the estimates and, you know, we've kind of gone back and forth with Wistat. Made revisions. And now here we are with those. We also wanted to give you an update on project funding because we haven't really talked a lot about this to this point. And also we had a surprise come up this week. So the estimated project cost to the city is about three and a quarter million dollars, obviously dependent on the bid prices we get. This is just an estimate right now, but it's, you know, a good detailed estimate at this point. We received word from Wistat this week that we are having to pay about $200,000 more due to adding parking lane costs north of Vine Street, which had previously been told that we wouldn't have to pay for. Which we feel is unfortunate. And I know Dave, I've talked to Dave about it and it's kind of, we should have been told that we were paying for it, but nobody had told us until last week. So it's a shock, but they're following their cost share guidelines as well. I don't know if Dave, you want to add anything to that description?
Yeah, you have it, you have it right on. And I'll apologize to the council and the people of Hudson. It was an oversight and a miscommunication between, you know, our design team that's working on putting the estimates together and then the financial team that writes up the agreements. It was a miscommunication in that area that isn't shown as striping and for the parking and there's actually a state statute out there that the details, you know, connecting highway and who pays for what and cost shares and how much and everything else. And that actually shows that the city is to pay six foot and the curb pen to get the eight foot for parking. And, and so that's the cost that's included in that 190, 195,000, I think it is, right, Dean? For that area from Vine up to Division. You know, there would be an option to eliminate parking in that area, but then with the full reconstruct, the road would be narrowed to a 36-foot width, which would make parking impossible. And I'm, I'm doubting that's a road we want to go down. No pun intended there. So yeah, that's, that's kind of where it comes from. It was an oversight on our part. I apologize for that, but it is a state statute that mandates that the city covers 100% of the parking.
I'll go Dean quick. So with that, we got the breakdown here. Basically, we'll be bonding for about 1.3 million. And then the rest will be paid from utility funds. The, the intention right now is to use cash on hand from the water sewer and storm sewer funds. They have adequate reserves to pay for the project with cash, so this won't have an impact on utility rates or anything like that. It'll be cash on hand from those. And then we will have to bond the 1.3 million for our portion, which obviously will have a tax impact. And so we did attach the 10, 15, 20-year bond runs, just so you could see what, depending on what we decide to do, what the, what the annual tax levy impact will be. We don't have to make a decision on that right now. We'll talk about that as a project. It's closer to the end of this year, early next year. Well, we'll kind of watch timing for bonds and when, when it looks like a good time to go out and do some bonding. But we'll make some decisions at that time about length of the bonds. But we do want the council to be aware that obviously this will have an impact on the tax levy for 2021.
Have a large impact on our other projects, our other streets that we need to be working on. So it's a little bit more than I anticipated, certainly. So we'll have to see how that there will be levy impact unless we reduce the street maintenance.
I would say that the, you know, who knows when you start talking about budget this early, but you would have to assume there's going to be a levy impact. Because it's, it's tough for us right now to do an either or, because we have so many needs. So I would say use this at least as an idea. So moving into next year's, you know, budget that will have some sort of impact and here's some ideas of what it could look like.
Yep. So moving on to recommended actions. Obviously, you know, the time has come to make some firm decisions on how to move forward with this project. We've, you know, kind of talked through some stuff beforehand, but really we're kind of rubber meets the road here tonight. So first recommended action, we just request action on the state's proposed design. I'll just throw out there that we feel at this point, given previous discussions, we proceed with the state's proposed design. Just will throw out there that staff doesn't feel like the river and Lake Malaloo design adequately addresses Just will throw out there that staff doesn't feel like the River to Lake Maloo design adequately addresses bike safety issues, but to not do the section at this time, well, I spitballing numbers out there. Later, if we did it later, cost the city roughly 1.2 million dollars to do later. And also, we have no guarantees that WISDOT will approve the changes anyway at that point in time. Second thing would be, we request action on adopting the state municipal agreements or SMAs for the project. They were provided in Attachment E. WISDOT has requested the state that we approve the SMAs as soon as possible, keep the project moving forward. We have been going back and forth with WISDOT on some additional things that we want to see within the project that involve some of the things in the SMAs with, going back and forth with WISDOT. There are some things that we feel, that we wanted to address in the SMAs, and WISDOT felt that we, that should be more better handled with project plans and specifications. Those two things are listed under the conditions bullets there. We don't want to allow construction equipment or hauling vehicles on any city street except for Second Street to minimize potential for damaging other city streets, except as approved and writing by the city engineer. And the second thing with that includes a plan to mitigate the risk of encountering and disposing of hazardous materials found during construction to the satisfaction of the city. And we've been discussing these back and forth, and we're getting there. But we feel like we need to cover ourselves from the potential of other costs that come up from this project, kinda minimizing risk as we move forward with the project. And WISDOT has told us, you know, based on state statutes and their policies, that these are things that we would be on the hook for paying for if we encountered them. So, wanna make sure we don't open up a box of whatever later on. That being said, I guess that's what I had in the issue sheet. I don't know if Aaron, you wanna kinda steer this discussion, or?
The only other thing I would add is that we did add that reimbursement resolution. So, you'll see that in the packet as well. All that, all that says is that the city's been expending funds to date, and planning for this project, things like that. And we intend to reimburse ourselves from the bond proceeds for the costs that we've spent so far. Other than that, I would say we should probably just open up the council questions.
Sounds good.
Hey, I've got some, probably more questions, more requests. The first one being, looking at the state's preferred design. If there's anything that can be done to make that construction, this is, I'm sorry, this is from River Street down to Maloo, to make that temporary? So, if and when we come back in a few years and try to make that a pathway like we want, wanted to do today? And this, and I, my hearing was that state said, "Yeah, that's okay, but we don't have time to actually approach that, and it's too late in the project to do this." So, whatever the state can do to make that a, a, the state preferred design temporary, like using, if you can use asphalt instead of concrete for removal? And I'm, I'm just spitballing engineering thoughts here. I don't necessarily, I'm not an expert on, on that design. And also, in the future, when we get, when we come to that point, if the state would be helpful, be willing to help us design the right pathway. That's the first thing. The second thing is, all through this project, First Street has been, and I wrote several words, has been designated, implied, assumed to be a safe bicycle pathway. And it is not particularly a safe bicycle pathway, particularly when you get two cars parked on both sides, when you get down anywhere near Lakefront Park, anywhere from Thursday afternoon through Saturday after, Sunday afternoon. That's a dangerous situation to be riding your bicycle on, on the roadway. So, the alternative is to, what we would like to see, is, what I would like to see, is that we can get some state assistance in completing the pathway from St. Croix to River on the Excel Energy property, and in widening the lakefront pathway from eight feet to 10 or 12. So, it's truly a multi-use pathway. Right now, it's really too narrow to be running a lot of bicycle traffic down there. It's beautiful, but it's too narrow to have bicycle and pads mixing. Third point is that we consider Main Street critical, and the use, the beauty, the proper design of that is important. So, if there's anything that we could do to look at the ramps and make sure that even though they may be ADA compliant, are they the best possible design? I differentiate between the two, just meeting the bare minimum ADA standards and being ramps that are highly useful and safe. That's it for me.
Anybody else?
And I guess I'd look for comments from Highway Department on anything that I had to say there.
Dave, did you have anything you could talk about with that?
Yeah, I can comment a little on that, you know, first, the making it a temporary. We are planning concrete pavement, curbing gutter, concrete sidewalk in these areas. And I, if, if we'd like to look at making a change there, we can certainly discuss that, although again, we're, we're getting, we've already turned in our prelim plans for review. We do have until August 1st to make any, any minor changes, but that can be tough. Is that, is that something the board and Hudson would like to see?
Could you bid alternate? Would it be possible just to, I mean, spec it as an alternate for pavement or something like that? I mean, just let it, let them kinda throw it out to you? If you, if you say, "Here's a design as is, but we're willing to take an alternate for, you know, a pavement."
We, we will, we can always accept alternatives that contractors propose, but we, as a state organization, are not allowed to put our plans together that way, if that makes sense. Communities can, counties can. The state's policies will not allow us to do alternative contracting in that regard for different pavements. I don't know why that is, but we have to choose and dictate which one.
So, when the bids come in, when the bids come in as planned right now, can we request from the contractor and say, "Hey, can you give us a number that would do it this way?" Is that possible? I mean, how would the contractor know to provide you with an alternate if we don't ask them?
Absolutely, and that's where it's, it's just not done, I guess. You know, if the project gets going and we would like to approach our contractor and ask them to do that, you know, we can ask the question, but, you know, we have no, no power to make them. They could just say, "Nope, we're gonna do this in concrete, that's what we bid. We're not even gonna give you a number for asphalt," and we just say, "Thank you." You know, but they, we can certainly ask, and they could tell us, you know.
That's good to know.
The second thing, assistance on a bike path in the future. You know, certainly with the way the state operates, if we have another project come through, we would obviously be participating in that, and being that this is connecting highway, the state reserves the right to review and approve any modification made to Second Street, so we certainly would be involved with the design of any future segment. With, with respect to the funding of the trail that you mentioned, there are some state programs and federal programs and grants out there that are available. Through the, the, the name of them is escaping me right now, but those are available. It's not really through the DOT and our development section, but more through, you know, the Madison part of our government and that way. But those are available for funding if you're interested in that. I can talk with Dean or Aaron offline, and we can figure that out.
I think we know most of those programs, and the requests are like 10 or 100 times the amount of money that's available for, for them.
Yeah, it certainly is, you know, but I'll say, I live in Eau Claire, and I have family down by Madison, and I think both those cities have a, have a great network of bikes and trails and shared use paths. And the majority of that is, I mean, certainly the city's put up a lot of money toward that, but they've also gotten a lot of grants, and I think one of the first steps is developing that comprehensive plan to really show what the, what the city's future would like it to look like. And that certainly helps, and I, I know, you know, Dean, if you're interested, the city engineer here in Eau Claire, I'm sure he'd be willing to talk about some of the things they do with their bike pad, and things to look at, and how they kinda go about that, if that would help.
They are a great example.
What else do we have here? Oh, the ADA ramps. Yeah, you know, ADA compliant versus best possible outcome, and, and I understand what you're meaning by that, I certainly do. However, we are bound by our, our own policies and governance with that act, and that we have to produce something that meets ADA compliance. Being that this is a state project, we have to follow our details, and what we have out there is, is the best that we have, based on those constraints. You know, we can go around in a circle till we're blue in the face to say, "Does Minnesota, does Illinois, does Oregon, whoever have a better detail?" Possibly. But with the tools and availability of options that we have, we have the best options out there to meet compliance. And where we could use the type-two ramps, we have them in there, but we've, we've had to use our modified type-ones in many locations due to grades and building locations and other environmental constraints that are around. But I do feel that we've put the time and effort in to give the best possible ramp that we have, given the tools that we have available to us. That's all I had jotted down on my list. Did I get everything you were looking for there?
Yes, you addressed them, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not satisfied with the answers, but thank you anyway.
Catherine, do you need a suspension of the rules?
Sorry about that. These are contracts, so they can be approved by motion.
We have a resolution, we have a resolution in there too, is that okay?
Well, you mean the reimbursement resolution? I think you should do those separately, cause the contracts are the contracts with the state, and then the resolution's a second, separate matter.
I'll move, we approve the contracts. Second.
Motion second to approve contracts, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Aye.
Motion's approved.
Roll call.
Harsette?
Yes.
Alms?
Thanks.
Yes.
Zio?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Ekin Hoggit?
Yes.
In Hall?
Yes.
Motion's approved.
Move to adopt resolution 10-20, or do you wanna?
What do you need a suspension for?
Move to suspend, second.
Motion second to suspend, roll call.
Harsette?
Yes.
Alms?
Yes.
Zio?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Ekin Hoggit?
Yes.
In Hall?
Yes.
Motion's approved.
Move to adopt resolution 10-20.
Second.
Motion second to adopt. Need a session? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion's approved. You all done with that one?
That all you requested, right, Dean or Aaron?
Yep, we're good to go.
Discussion possible action on the build grant application for Carmichael Road, full build north of Interstate 94.
All right, oh, sorry.
I have a question. I'm Camilo with Garden City. I don't know, was it an approved agenda already for the temporary garden center, or that's coming up? Or, I don't know, so I need to keep staying in the meeting or not?
You can leave, it was approved, not consent.
Oh, it was approved?
Yeah.
You're not, did you make this?
What was that? I was here, like, I don't know if I have to keep, I thought it was coming up in the, in the agenda, so.
You're good, it's been approved, yep.
Okay, perfect, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
All right. So, 8B, the build grant application. So, this is in regards to the Carmichael Road full build north of Interstate 94. Obviously, everybody knows that Carmichael Road is an important corridor to the city of Hudson. And everybody also knows that there's a fair amount of issues that, that road experiences both now and as our city grows, we anticipate that there are going to be other issues that come up. And so, ever since the last comprehensive plan was adopted in 2009, we've been kinda incrementally improving the corridor, while also kinda studying the corridor for, you know, ultimate, what is this facility gonna look like for the city of Hudson in the future? So, a little background, in 2018, SCH completed a traffic analysis of the corridor to kinda determine what those future improvements would, could look like. Obviously, there's still room for figuring out alternatives and details and all that kinda stuff. But it led to a development of a preliminary layout of improvements for the ultimate build-out of Carmichael Road north of 594. So, fast forwarding now to a couple months ago, we learned of a funding opportunity that would allow a significant portion of the project costs to be funded by a grant from the federal government, and the grant is called the build grant. I don't know what build stands for, it's an acronym for something, but essentially allows whoever selected to build infrastructure projects that are a significant investment in the community, but also will address issues that the community is facing for infrastructure, and also corridors that contribute to economic development and all that good stuff. So, based on the selection criteria and all the other stuff involved in the build grant, staff feels that the Carmichael Road corridor project would fit within the intended type of the project that the build grant was really being targeted for. However, the grant submission deadline is May 18th, which obviously is coming up in two weeks from today. And we also want to make sure that we're not just throwing something out there that's, you know, haphazard and may not be, you know, successful. So, we went out to our engineering consultants that we have in our pool and asked them for proposals for helping us out with putting this grant application together in order to have the best chance of success. And we received one proposal back from SCH, Bolden and Mink, wanted to let everybody know that they would have definitely appreciated the opportunity, but they felt, given their staffing and other stuff they have right now, that they weren't able to provide enough staff to make the project successful on their end, and they didn't wanna, obviously, weigh us down with that. So, so what we, we got SCH's proposal. We asked them to write a proposal for two tasks. One would be to assist with developing a build grant application for the construction and right-of-way for the reconstruction of Carmichael Road. Obviously, that would be the lion's share of what the cost would be to actually get something built in the ground. Task two, we assist with developing a build grant application for the design part of the corridor. So, there's a specific pot of money in the build grant funding source that is earmarked for design of corridors like this as well. So, we felt that the design part of it would, it would be beneficial to at least, you know, get plans and specifications, you know, developed for, you know, the next time a grant application comes around, to have things essentially shovel-ready for, for building. So, so we just need action on this tonight to accept the proposal and the letter of engagement as attached, to have SCH provide help for us to get this stuff done. Any questions?
We have a motion?
I would move to approve.
Second.
Motion second to approve, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Proposed, motion's approved. Thanks, Dean. Discussion possible action to waive late tax payment penalties and interest.
So, we talked about this at finance, and so basically, with the COVID-19 legislation passed by the state, the state has allowed counties to waive interest fees- passed by the state, the state has allowed counties to waive interest fees and penalties on, on late tax payments for the second half tax payments of this year. And Allison pointed out this before and I want to make sure to clarify it because she was correct. All this is really doing is basically delaying the money that we were receiving by about a month. It gives people an extra month or so to pay, but if they take that time off, they don't accrue any sort of interest, no penalties, things like that. And as far as cash flow goes for us, we're okay with that. We've got a very healthy general fund reserve. We'll be just fine to be able to cash flow it and we don't need, or I, I think, want to penalize anyone at this point in time when it takes a little extra time to be able to pay their taxes.
I'll move, we approve.
Second.
Motion second to approve, any discussion?
I just think it makes a whole lot of sense because there's a lot of people hurting with losing jobs, being furloughed, and whatever we can do as a city to help with that in this kind of unusual circumstance, I think we got to do. So I'm strongly in favor.
Good point. Anybody else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion's approved. I don't have anything other than I hope everybody's doing okay. Anybody, Dean, I don't know if you're still on, it looks like you got a haircut. I'm kind of waiting somewhere to be able to get one.
Yeah.
Bill, I don't need one. Or Aaron.
Scott, I see you're on. You got anything to say?
I think he's muted still right now.
I can see that, but yeah.
You pulled in to make it look good.
Mayor, I, I just want to comment real quick on the dive team. I know it's past the consent agenda, but just clarify a couple things. One is that it, it's going to be at the emergency management. It's going to be treated as a separate line item because it's a city entity. It's not part of our overall fire department because of our partners really didn't approve it. So just to clarify that. And then the other thing is Glenn was being paid under the police budget, wasn't coming out of dive team budget. So after we look at this and figure it all out, we may need to get some funding to have the dive team coordinator because that was a, like I say, funded through the police budget, not through the dive team budget. It was separate. He's paid like four hours a week to do that. So just a couple of things on that, but we're looking into a lot of things of how to, how to operate it in the future, but that, that's about it.
All right, buddy. Thanks for chiming in. Good to have you here. Anybody else? You got anything?
Yeah, I do. We just got a notice today that this is Professional Municipal Clerks Week, the 3rd through the 9th. And so congratulations to Becky and thank you. And we appreciate your efforts.
Are you celebrating right after this Becky or what?
Oh, got too much to do tomorrow.
Mayor, if I may say one thing before we check out today?
We lost you, Mike.
Oh, I just, I just want to make one comment before we, we adjourn the meeting. So as many of you have probably noticed, Carmichael Road has been closed due to some sewer tie-in connections going on at the Bella Rose Development. That will continue tomorrow and it should be wrapped up on Wednesday. So Carmichael Road should be back open by, in the afternoon Wednesday, if not Thursday at the latest. So just so that all of you are aware, if you start getting phone calls, that is what is going on there. It's a temporary road closure for this sewer tie-in. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Jim, thanks for bringing up the clerk week thing. That's good.
All right. One quick thing. So Becky, can you just clarify for the public, the election for May 12th? Just kind of what the city's planning for that election?
Um, we're kind of, we're handling it like we did in April. So we've condensed the Faith Community Church pulling location and city halls, all going to be across the street at the fire hall. We're going to expand into another base, so there's a little more room in there. It's going to look, and then it's still at United Methodist Church. So it's going to look the same as it was in April. The numbers of absentees are right up there, if not going to exceed what we had in April, which wasn't, we weren't prepared for. So we're ordering extra ballots and getting more printed. And so the numbers are up for this election.
I want to thank you for the work you've done, both on the past one and the one coming up, because I know you guys are handling a huge volume under some tough conditions. I appreciate your work on that.
Thank you.
Yep. Thanks for that, Paul. Anybody else? All right. Well, it's good to see everybody. And we'll all talk soon. See each other on video again soon.
Move to adjourn. Do we have to move to adjourn?
Yes. Second.
Motion second to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion's approved, we stand adjourned. Thanks.